On this is Keri, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. I, my camera is wanting to turn off because my internet connection is bad. We just landed in Chicago, so I am listening in and I'll turn off the camera. And well, I'm on, I'll just, I appreciate you running the meeting here as we're getting ready to call it to order. So, uh, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, I think it's five thirty, so we'll go ahead and call it to order. As you can see, the mayor is working her way back from Aspen, so setting in her place for this evening. So we'll call it to order. First item is roll call.
Deacon. Fitzwater.
Present.
Hensley.
Here.
Kimna.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Spencer.
Here.
Spicer.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
All right, we have a quorum. Next item is adoption of the agenda as you see in front of you.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. I just had a question. I don't know, Mr. Millman, if this was the time to raise it, just to make sure I'm clear on our role for tonight. As we discussed this issue at the last council, we talked about waiting till Councilwoman Wiseman was back and to do a work session to kind of discuss where we were in the various proposals coming in. Can you just clarify the difference between a work session and a special session and kind of what our role is tonight?
Sure, but, sorry, the, uh, a, a work session is essentially where there's no business, um, to be undertaken. Generally, no votes are taken at a work session unless it relates to the operation of the meeting itself. Um, a special session is, is a regular session of the city council where there, there is business that could be taken up. And so, uh, essentially what we have tonight, uh, and then from, from, from my understanding of, of what was, what was asked is that the bill would be placed on the agenda, uh, for a special session. Uh, it does not mean that the city council has to take action on it. Um, you know, if, if the city council does not want to take action, it's not required to take action. But, um, essentially it is, it's, uh, currently sitting on the agenda. I believe it's still on the informal calendar. Only, only regular sessions count toward the, uh, the informal calendar, um, dates, so it really doesn't affect. So this is, um, an item that can be taken up by the city council if it so chooses. The bill has been first read. Um, I believe it's been third read as well, so it is ready for action. So that's something that the city council can do tonight or could wait till some other, uh, regular session of the city council. So that, that's the difference. Happy, happy to answer any questions. Yes, yes. So there would, there would be need, there would need to be an action to take it off the informal calendar. So that could either happen by vote, um, vote by the city council or by, by action of the, uh, of the bill sponsor. But that could, that could happen either before or after discussion.
Okay. That was my question. I just wanted to know procedurally whether I had to bring it off the calendar, informal to discuss, or if we could discuss first and then bring it off the informal calendar. So, Pat, your pleasure, Pro Tem.
I guess should, okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Any other questions on process for night? Councilman Spencer.
So for clarification's sake, for tonight's meeting, we are calling this a special session, even though the term that was used at our last council meeting was work session.
The, the term was work session. The substance of what was described, in my understanding, described a special session.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Brings us to item four, salary adjustment discussions. We have Bill twenty twenty-two zero zero nine on the informal calendar. Council, remember Wiseman?
Pro Tem, I, I will, uh, I'll kick this off. I know that there have been, um, a number of suggestions and, um, and I believe even one this afternoon, maybe a conglomerate of a couple other suggestions. And so, um, if, if, if it would please the council, maybe we could have, maybe start, I don't know which way, but have our suggestions start off maybe, um, with somebody explaining one of their suggestions and then we could discuss each of them or discuss them as a whole, or I, I'm not sure which, which would be best, but, um, I frankly would like to hear from Ms. Councilman Hensley, um, and his suggestion if, if he's prepared.
Well, I am prepared and, uh, if the rest of the council, uh, is in agreement, I'd, I'd be happy to. Speak now or forever. Okay.
Is that appropriate way to proceed?
Yeah, that's fine.
So at, at this point, um, sorry, it, it is, have you, you have pulled it off? So it's?
I, I thought we would just discuss first.
Okay.
And then we'll
Just make a
decide how we're going to proceed.
Very good. Um, yeah, and I'll, uh, I apologize profusely via email and I'll do it again where you can see my face. Um, I, I really wish I'd been able to, uh, devote a few hours, um, to these proposals that we've had in front of us, um, mainly to, uh, view them side by side and, uh, and really analyze them together, um, before this point. But I, I was able to do that today and, um, and share with, uh, the council this afternoon and, and others. A plan, I will, uh, or a, a proposal anyway, and, uh, I would like to thank at this point, Councilman Lester and Councilman Spencer, who have, uh, really communicated with the council, and staff countless times almost over the last several weeks, uh, both with, uh, really detailed, um, well-studied proposals that were quite different from one another, uh, but, but each had, I mean, in my opinion, uh, at least, you know, uh, their own very strong merits and can appreciate where, where the two of them were coming from. My main concern with the five percent across the board proposal is that it really just widens the gap, uh, I think between, um, salaries on the higher end and salaries on the lower end. Uh, and by five percent proposal, I mean, five percent of each individual employee's pay, uh, that that employee would get five percent of their own pay. I mean, obviously if someone is making a hundred thousand dollars a year, five percent of their pay is considerably more than someone who's making fifty thousand dollars a year in, in actual dollars. Um, so that was, that was a concern of mine just, uh, from, from those numbers. And there were aspects of Councilman Lester's plan and Councilman Spencer's plan, um, that I thought had a lot of merit and, and putting them together that I could see working really well to address a few of the issues that we've been talking about. You know, the, the, the main issue recently is this, this retention, um, and, and cost of living increase piece. Um, but, you know, for the last several years, we've been talking about, um, you know, the issue of compression as, as well and, um, and we also know that fairly soon on the horizon, we have, um, some organizational and, and pay studies that are, that are going to be coming. So we understand that whatever we might adopt tonight or in the very near future would, uh, be Scott, stopgap for what we might actually be able to, uh, accomplish in, in a, a larger manner after we have, um, all of the data. But, um, anyhow, so what I've, my proposal that I'm bringing tonight is, um, what I, I view as a compromise, uh, blended approach between Councilman Spencer and Councilman Lester's, uh, plans that, um, doesn't fix everything. I'll acknowledge that, uh, right up front. Um, but I think it does give nice boosts for employees at all stages of their career with, uh, a uniform, uh, increase and then other increases, uh, depending on an employee's particular situation. It seems that most employees who are leaving and who have left recently, that the vast majority have been folks with twelve or fewer years of service, uh, maybe even ten or fewer years of service, um, with the city and, uh, who have been in the sort of the, the mid, the mid pay ranges. So that's really where my main focus has been. And then there are some other sort of pieces on, on the side. So just to, to lay out a few of the points, one, one piece would be a, uh, two and a half percent of the average employee salary across the board. So finding the average employee salary for city employees, uh, and taking two and a half percent of that, which is about, uh, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, that would be a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, total piece, um, approximately, if, if the numbers that I relied on were, were accurate. So that's one piece and a, and a board, and across the board, two and a half, uh, uh, percent of average salary increase. Uh, second piece would be a pay increase for employees who were hired, uh, before two thousand nineteen. Um, so folks who've been with us for a few years, that would be a five hundred dollar, uh, per employee bump. That's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total approximately. I don't, that's, uh, there are a couple of these that, uh, I don't have firm numbers on exactly how many employees would be affected, but we'll, we will, of course, learn those, uh, those accurate numbers before finalizing anything. And then an increase for ranges seven to twenty-three. Uh, pay ranges, uh, seven to twenty-three, a one thousand dollar per employee, uh, increase, uh, estimated to be about three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so that's that, that mid-range, um, where, where we've seen, I think, a lot of our, uh, employee losses, um, recently. Uh, the fourth piece, uh, the one, the longevity pay plan. This is for folks on the, the higher end in terms of years of service. And what I'm proposing at fifteen years of service, there's a five hundred dollar bump. Thirty years of service, there's a five hundred dollar bump. Forty years of service, there's a five hundred dollar bump. And those are accumulating amounts. So if, if someone has forty years of service in, they would get a fifteen hundred dollar bump because they have been here for forty years. So that means that they've also been here for thirty years and for fifteen years. And same for folks with thirty years of service. So that would be five hundred to fifteen hundred dollars per eligible employee. Um, I think the estimate for that currently is somewhere around a hundred and two thousand dollars. And if I could go back to the, the second piece for just a moment, I forgot to mention something. I, I think with the increase for employees who were hired before two thousand nineteen, we need to be prepared to adjust that in future years for other folks, uh, who were, who are hitting that four years of service, three years of service mark. Um, you know, you, you just try to head off as many, um, problems as you can, uh, that you can see coming down the road. So I, I think that's one, that's important. So those four pieces together, um, I see as a package that, um, depending on, of, an employee's profile would get them uh, at or above what they would get out of, um, some of the other plans or, and pieces of, pieces of the other plans. One, uh, some other important points here, uh, the communications operators. Um, we're having a, a real problem in that area. Uh, I fully support, uh, Councilman Spencer's proposal to get their minimum pay up to forty thousand dollars a year while also maintaining the current pay separations within that staff. And I think, I don't know if it's, uh, appropriate tonight to do officially, or if we can just sort of unofficially, uh, give the head nod to this, but, uh, I think part of this conversation should also be us committing to the twenty-five hundred dollar per employee, uh, essential worker pay through, um, through ARPA, uh, that was introduced last week and that will hopefully be approved, uh, at the full council meeting, uh, next, next Tuesday. So I, I think that needs to be, uh, part of the discussion. Except for, except for the twenty-five hundred dollar, except for the ARPA piece, which would go to each and every employee uh, under the proposal I'm supporting anyway, on the ARPA side. For the two and a half percent, the, uh, three, the, the, the three years of service piece, the range is seven to twenty-three piece, and then the longevity plan. Those pieces, um, in my proposal anyway, assume three hundred and forty included employees uh, with the exclusions of the city administrator, the chief of police and sworn positions that are covered by the Fraternal Order of Police, uh, contract. My rough numbers for my first four pieces together, um, come in at about nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Councilman Lester's plan was, uh, by my calculations anyway, uh, a bit less than that. I believe Councilman Spencer's plan was a bit more than that. Anyhow, I'm just putting that out there. So, um, you know, most of this focus is on the section of employees that seem to have over the last, I believe it was year or so, uh, Councilman Lester, was that the, the, the main period in, in what you sent?
Yes, it was the year.
Okay.
Past year.
So that's, that's the, sort of the central target here, uh, with the bump for the earlier years and then the recognition, uh, for the, uh, the remarkably long, uh, ten years. So, you know, I see that as supporting retention on the front end, uh, certainly rewarding service or acknowledging service on the back end while also doing, uh, something to relieve some compression by getting those later years of service, uh, salaries adjusted in a way that, uh, is, would not be available to the, the mid and, and shorter terms of service. And, um, think if I missed anything else here. I, I mean, the, the dispatcher's piece, I think, is absolutely essential, no matter what else we do. And the, I, you know, I'm, I'm confident that the ARPA piece will, will happen, but I, I, I think we, I think we need to include that again in this conversation. And again, I will, you know, uh, acknowledge that I borrowed and blended heavily from two of my colleagues who put an awful lot of effort into, uh, into studying this topic and I, uh, again, appreciate their efforts. When the time is right, I will, I will move that the council, um, adopt this proposal for, for discussion um, and then see where the conversation goes. Uh, I, I guess, and finally, I should also acknowledge Councilman Spencer and Councilman Lester were, uh, kind and gracious enough to, um, concur with me bringing this up tonight for discussion. Of course, that doesn't mean that they agree with every aspect or that they'll ultimately wind up voting for it. Uh, but I, I, I did agree, I, I did appreciate their, their sense of cooperation and, and working with me on this. So, uh, I'll stop filibustering now.
Just had a question. The numbers that you proposed, are those annual numbers or is that the cost for the balance of this fiscal year?
Uh, I don't know what the, I don't know what the balance would be for the rest of the fiscal year to get us into November. I don't know, I don't know what, I mean, we're about halfway through, so I, I
So the four twenty-five would be the impact for a full year?
Well, um, I guess it depends on how it's rolled out, but yeah, that would be, that would be increasing the salaries by two and a half percent per year.
Accurate number?
I, I
Ballpark number.
I, I don't know. I, you have any sense? Doesn't include benefits, so I assume?
I did not factor it in.
And logger, so that, that's, but I don't, I don't know from, I, I can't, I don't think that can be right on an annual basis, if that's what you're asking me.
This is, this is only, this is only salary figures.
Okay, questions? Councilman Spencer.
Councilman Hensley, and I appreciate the air, all the work and effort because it, 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 knowing how much it took to even just roll out what I presented too. So, um, thank you very much. I think we're really close. Firstly, I would just like to see the longevity pay plan bumped up, um, to kind of be funded, um, a little bit more. I think, you know, I think we all share the sentiment that I think we, we have, uh, a legitimate one whack at this or, you know, until we get more information, uh, based on the other Sowers study that's, that's coming back, which, not the ill any time, but do we have an idea when that information's coming?
Yeah, we're looking at, uh, Steve and I are doing a conference call with them this week and then we're looking at asking them to, um, present, just meet with the council at the second meeting in July. We have not confirmed that that definitely works in their schedule, though.
Um, so I guess what I would maybe propose, um, on the longevity piece, if we wanted to kind of lessen some of those brackets and, and use yours, um, Councilman Hensley, going from a fifteen, thirty to forty, um, fifteen years would be twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Thirty years would be twenty-five hundred and forty years would be thirty-five hundred. You know, approximately, we have two employees that would be eligible for the forty-year. On the thirty-year side, about fourteen employees. And on the fifteen-year side, uh, sixty-seven employees. And again, these are numbers based on data of last year's data. Uh, fifteen years would be approximately sixty-seven employees. But, oh, oh, the fifty, oh, okay, uh, first, the dollar amounts for fifteen years would be twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Thirty years would be twenty-five hundred. Uh, forty years would be thirty-five hundred. And I think me and, uh, Councilman Hensley had this discussion today. Maybe, maybe this, this is changing. You know, the, the, the market for the, for workforce, maybe we won't see in future years thirty and forty-year employees. Maybe, maybe those aren't happening as, as much. Um, but I think fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, I think, you know, those are probably legitimate, uh, years of service, but, um, to make it more impactful, that's what I would like to see on, on that side of the proposal. Thank you.
Councilman Hensley.
Thanks, and I'll, I'll just, I'll respond to those comments. Um, and I think this is, will probably apply to several of the comments that are, that are shared this evening. I totally understand, uh, where you're coming from on that. I know that that, uh, was, was part of your, or, uh, if not exactly, uh, at least very similar to, to what was in your original proposal. And you had, you had a few other striations in there. I, I, I think you had maybe every ten or five, uh, five or ten years, starting from fifteen years up to forty. What I was trying to do here with these numbers was, um, achieve some of the same benefit without ballooning the overall expense. And I appreciate you bringing that up tonight. And I, you know, that was one particular piece that I thought it was important for the whole council to, to have discussion on and, and if it's the, uh, majority view of the council that, that we go that direction and, and increase, uh, this by a few hundred thousand dollars. You know, I, I think that's great. Um, I just, uh, wanted to explain why that and, and probably a few other pieces that were original to, uh, to these two proposals were, were not in my, uh, proposal this evening. Thank you.
Councilman Lester?
So yes, um, my proposal is similar to what John proposed, uh, uh, mainly concentrated on the lowest pay grade, uh, employees who mainly we've been losing and, and if you look at they, current basencies, uh, employees that we need to, uh, attract, uh, currently. And so that's why I proposed the average, uh, five percent of the average salary across And so that's why I proposed the average, 5% of the average salary across all employees, which was an amount of $2,532. And I'm fine with John's proposal because I see that really with his proposal, all those pay grades would be eligible for $2,250 in his proposal. One thing that I think is very important that is not in this proposal that was in mine was to raise the, increase the minimum pay in each of the grades because I think as I've shared with council, we have a lot of employee vacancies, and most of them are in those lower pay grades, eight to 17. And so I would propose that part of any proposal is to also raise the minimum pay for each of the grades, and I would say consistent with what John has proposed, if we go that way, that that minimum, raising, raising that minimum by $2,250.
Yeah, I understand where Councilman Lester's coming from, but again, we might be making the compression issue worse. And, and again, looking at through those, those figures of last year's data that, that I did include the previous 3%, or last year's 3% adjustment, the majority of our long-term employees, and that's really who I'm advocating for tonight, because they're not even at midpoint of the pay scale. I mean, that very first email I sent out to you with two employees in the same pay grade as 16, one starting in 1992 and the other starting in 2020, you know, the person that started in 1992 is only at 57.8, where the gentleman's, or the person starting in 2020 is at 65.5. And, you know, it's just really hard for our long-term employees to even where they're at today, you know, there's no way we can, you bring up that bracket, that entry-level bracket, they lose even more ground.
So, so I'm sympathetic to that. I think that's, that's, those type of issues certainly need to be addressed, but I think that's why we're doing the study, and I think it's best to wait on that study and really adjust all those type of inconsistencies and inequities. We'll have, have more of a guide from the study, I think, than from this, which is more stopgap and to address this problem we have now of trying to retain employees, and most of them are on these lower level pay grades. So anyway, that's why the focus, my focus was that.
And just to, you know, we're kind of running out of time, though, for our long-term employees, though. I mean, we're getting, those employees are getting 25, 30, 30, two years of service. How much longer are we going to expect them to wait, you know, to enact something?
No, I, I agree, but I'm hoping that we can get this study and fold what we need to do across all the pay grades into this next budget cycle. Now, I don't know if that's going to be possible, but we sure need to try to do that, which is coming up within, within a few months.
Other comments?
My only question is-
Councilman Deacon.
I would assume the firefighters have been left out of this. As a budget note, the communication officer, is that going to come out of general revenue? Is that going to be through the safety tax? Do we know that? I know there's been talk about that maybe could use the communication officers from the safety tax, and I assume the firefighters is not part of this, because they'll be separate just like we did the police.
Councilman Hensley.
The fire department employees have not been excluded from this plan yet.
And I think it's a question about council's preference on for communications operators, whether you want that to come out of public, whatever is adopted, come out of public safety tax or out of the general fund.
I would like to see it come out of the safety tax, and I would like to be able to merge them with firefighters and police together. Rather have a, seem like we have three different firefighters, we have safety, I mean, police, and then we have communications. And the communication, those guys are so stressed out, they should be on equal footing with everyone, not just a separate stepchild.
All right, other questions, comments? Councilmember Wiseman.
Yeah, is there, is there a reason we could not vote on the $2,500 commitment from ARPA tonight since this is a special session? I mean, if that was something that we all agreed on and we said, and we made that a motion, could we, could we vote on that tonight?
You're going to ask our legal advisor, I don't-
I was going to say, sorry to keep putting you on the spot.
-the agenda as proposed.
Just for clarification, that's a one-time payment.
Correct.
It's been submitted as a plan, as part of a plan that we're discussing tonight, so.
Ryan, when someone else suggested that to me, I made exactly the same face as you're making.
I appreciate that. I, I, yeah, I, I think that that is pertinent enough to the topic that is within the, within the bill, that that would be an allowable action. This is ameliorated by the fact that whatever we would have to do, we'd have to come back with a separate bill to actually do the budgeting. So, so that is, but I think that the city council could take action to make that commitment, knowing that it would have to further follow up with a, with an appropriate budgeting action. So I think we're good.
Mr. Kroll.
And that needs to be prospective. That's a little different. I mean, that, we need to figure, I think, we need to figure that out and what that, some of the specifics related to that, but it needs to be a prospective action.
Yeah, yeah, there's some state constitutional issues that go along with that, that it cannot be retroactive.
The only question I'd ask, and Councilman Hensley has put a lot of work into it, that is a, the overall, overall ARPA is a finite number, this is a piece of it, everything else is negotiated against everything else within that package.
Correct.
Are you comfortable with acting on one piece of it without having the discussions on the other?
I think so. I think I'm comfortable with what you and I proposed, and as long as everyone else understands the same point, that when we come back next Tuesday to have another discussion on the ARPA funds, if we were to commit to this tonight, I think that when we come back next Tuesday, we would be discussing the allocation of funds from the overall, I don't have those notes with me, but it's, it's slightly north of $7.3 million, $7.4 million total. So we would be discussing that seven-plus million dollars minus whatever we would approve tonight potentially, as well as after reducing it by the amount that we put towards stormwater during the last budget cycle of $790-ish thousand, I think. So if we commit to this tonight, sorry, my, all I'm saying is that when we come back to cut up the rest of it and allocate it out with some sort of final decision, we wouldn't have this additional funding to, to work with anymore. That was much too long an answer. There you go.
No, that was good. Thank you. Mr. Kroll.
So on item seven, if that includes department directors by excluding the chief of police, I've negotiated that salary already, and I've tried to keep that comparable with other directors, so I may need to revise my number there. So I just want to make sure I've made that clear.
Your number on the chief of police salary?
Salary, yeah, we've-
Deuce to him. Yeah, good news, we got bad news.
Other comments, questions? Councilwoman Ward.
Yes, I, I thank you for this plan, I think both, for both plans. I've gone through them, and they all have great components and merits. I like Councilman Hensley's, but I also share the same statements and concerns regarding longevity. I would like to see, you know, adding 20, 25-year in there too, because, you know, when you get up to 30, between 30 and 40 years, you know, there's not a, a lot of left, time left, work time, you know, you're looking at retirement, so you're not going to benefit from that increase. But, you know, 15, 20, 25 years, those are, you know, kind of our core loyal, hardworking, you know, staff, and, and I just think those five-year increments is kind of like a reward for their continued five years each time, so just comments I have regarding that.
Councilman Kemna, did you have a comment?
Not really, but I just, I just know, so all fall under number one, then two through four, it varies, and I know we don't have percentages of what those figures would play into, because I know staff was looking at the 5% across the board, so I didn't know if you factored in two through four where that got those individuals as far as those numbers. I know, I don't know if we can figure that out later, because I know you just proposed this tonight, but I was just, I was just curious as where they would fall in as percentage-wise.
Councilman Spencer.
So obviously, the ARPA fund piece, that's 100% of our employees. The two and a half percent across the board amount, that's for all employees, 100% employees. The number three on Councilman Hensley's list, that, I think that's probably around 95% of our employees. The longevity pay plan would be a little over 53% of our employees. So that kind of, I mean, I think, I think we're hitting-
Councilman Spencer, when you, when you said, you went to, were you talking about paragraph number one, the two and a half percent?
Yes.
Across, so as going to all the employees, we're just talking about, I was just making sure, we're just talking about the 340 that have not been excluded, right? You weren't, ARPA goes to 100%, 100% of 100% of the employees, one goes to 100% less the folks excluded in item six, or item seven, right?
Right, the FOP, yeah.
Okay, just making sure I heard it correctly.
Sorry, yes, correct.
Great.
Councilwoman Wiseman.
Yes, and Councilman Spencer, you had indicated three different levels, the 15, 20, and 25 years, and so were you suggesting that for the 25 years, all of, all of those be added? Councilman Hensley suggested that for the 40-year service that they would get the $1,500. And so I wasn't sure what the different, if you were suggesting the same addition or you were just suggesting this flat.
Excuse me, I probably didn't make that real clear. I would, I would feel comfortable if we're trying to maybe minimize some costs there in this longevity pay plan, just strike 40-year employees completely. Just go up to 30 and add, add 15, 20, 25, and 30 be the, be the cap, and go with the original amounts that were suggested. So 15-year employees would be 1,250, 20-year, 1,750, 25, 2,000, and then 30, 2,500, and then that'd be the, that'd be the end.
Okay, so, so like a 20-year employee would not get $3,000, they would get the 1,750.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah.
So that would be under an amendment that would be made and passed if we were to take up this for discussion, or if we, if this were to come off for a vote, we'd have to adjust it.
Yes, I, I just wanted to make sure I understood the difference between his suggestion and yours, because yours was if you've hit this mark, then you get 500, and so if you hit this mark, then you get 1,000, this mark is 1,500. And I'm sure we could adjust those numbers too, but, or those years, but I just wanted to make sure I understood that he was not adding.
Right, right, yeah, well, folks would get to a pretty similar place, actually, because what he's, I think what you're including there is, is the final number, and what, in my little accumulation approach, they're just added up as you go through the years, and then you eventually get to a final number that's pretty similar to, to yours. Great, thanks.
Directions?
I mean, I do like-
Councilman Kemna.
The amendment, I don't know if we had to vote to amend, I know this isn't really a bill that's proposed, but.
We don't really have anything right now. Councilwoman Wiseman.
Mr. Protem, I'd like to remove it from the informal calendar, this bill, from the informal calendar.
All right, the request has been to remove any objections? All right, you see that bill before you? Councilman Hensley.
I'm going to wing this, but I have slight confidence.
All right, can I hold you up just one second, then? We do have on the agenda public comment or discussion. We don't have anybody signed up as anybody wanting to make comment. Just wanted to make sure you had an opportunity, if you do. No takers. All right, Councilman Hensley.
Okay, I would move that the bill that is currently before us be amended in line with the proposal that I've shared this evening. Is that appropriate? Are we good there?
I'd like to second that.
So if I can make a suggestion? So I, looking at the bill, not the substitute bill.
That's correct.
So an appropriate motion would be to add a Section 1A, which would state that Exhibit B attached here, too, is hereby adopted as though set forth fully herein.
So moved.
Second.
Then we would mark your, mark your, your proposal as Exhibit B.
Thank you. Moved and seconded.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Councilman Deacon.
Does this get to longevity pay? I was a little confused. Are we increasing longevity pay above 500? Is that correct? The bill we're voting on?
So not the way it currently stands.
All I've, all I've moved currently is to substant, is to amend, not substitute, is to amend the current bill to add this detail, and then if that passes, then we will discuss the bill as amended. Correct.
Everybody clear on that?
So, so we, so we pass this as a substitute, and then we can talk about amendment that? That correct?
Then that would be the clean bill on the table, and then we would work on that. Any other comments, discussions, everybody comfortable as Mr. Melman described it, I think, or Mark has it?
I would only make one note that the, the number that's contained in that bill obviously isn't right, and so there may need to be some additional legislation in the future to make sure that number is correct. No, the, the, the amount, the appropriation amount. No, the, 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 the amount, the appropriation amount.
It's a roll call.
It's a very specific number, it'd be nothing short of a miracle if it was correct, so.
Do we need a roll call for that, for this vote?
It, it's a good idea, yeah.
Prior to that, any other questions, comments, everybody clear on what this first move is?
I have a question.
Councilman Hensley?
Ryan, would it, would it be better at this point, before we've uh, approved this potentially, to replace, uh, paragraph, uh, strike through paragraph eight and replace it with language along the lines of, uh, subject to a final estimated accounting?
Yeah, um, I, I, I saw that, um, yeah, I would say that's, that is merely advisory language, but probably a D, a good idea to, to have that type of amendment.
Okay, um, if I could move to amend the amendment by, by striking through paragraph, the current language in paragraph eight, and replacing it, which I'll do by hand here in just a moment, where Emily's got it, uh, with the language, uh, subject to final estimated accounting.
So you're talking about number eight on this form?
Correct, on exhibit B, on exhibit B, yes.
Thirty-second, that, just in the middle, I interrupted him.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. D, did you have a question?
I did, um, sorry, just have a couple of, um, questions, just looking at implementing it, so kind of implementation questions. So, one, we've talked about raising the minimum of the range, does that mean you guys want the maximum of the range to stay where they are?
So, I think it, I think at this point, that would be a discussion related to a potential motion to amend once, uh, it's approved for a discussion.
Okay.
So I, it's a long way of saying if we could hold that for just a few minutes, probably.
Yeah, let me just throw, um, throw out my three questions then, and that, now, and then that way you guys can think of them however, um, you want to, but then the other one would be, um, it's very possible that based on the things proposed, if, there are some employees that might top out. So my question would be, what would you want us to do with those employees who top out? Do anything, or are they just, wherever they get to the max, then that's where they stay? Um, and then the third question is just some clarification on the communications operators. Um, I know their starting salary right now is around thirty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty, so it says, um, raise it to forty thousand, maintaining current pay separations, so does that mean that we go through and give each of them all of these items, and then on top of that, give them gonna be a little under four thousand dollars each, or does it mean whatever this is, and if anybody's below forty thousand, increase them to that?
My preference would be-
I just wanted to clarify, I'll just need, uh, before we would implement something like this, if it were to pass and be implemented.
Councilman Hensley?
Yeah, sorry, I started talking and then-
No, you're fine.
And then my, then I started thinking, um. I would, I mean, my, my initial reaction is to, is to bump the minimum pay piece first for the communications operators, and then if the other adjustments, if they qualify for the other adjustments, then to make those adjustments, or, or, I'm open to other ideas, so.
Councilman Spencer?
What, what I, what I meant initially by that was, so if we, we have the current pay structure of our dispatchers, let's, I was just saying dispatcher A's thirty-seven thousand, dispatcher B's thirty-eight, so there's already that thousand-dollar separation. We keep that separation, that thousand-dollar separation to bring it up to the forty thousand dollar minimum. So, so everybody's getting forty thousand, but if there's a thousand-dollar separation from dispatcher A to dispatcher B, then we, we would add that in there, so, so we're not creating a compression problem again on the dispatcher side.
Instead you'd have forty and forty-one.
Right.
Right, but I think that the issue is with the math is when you start, i- do you, do you, do you start with the forty and forty-one, and then do the two-point-five percent? And then the, if they're eligible for the five hundred, or the thousand, or the other years, or do you start with those other ones, and then give the two-point-five percent? So I think that's what the issue is, is with the math on that.
Um, Councilman Weisman, I really didn't think that far down the line.
Sorry.
No, um, but I would be fine with bringing the two-point-five percent based on forty thousand for the dispatcher figure. I think that, that hits kind of the sweet spot, in my opinion, instead of doing it it, on a current two and a half percent of what they're making now.
So you're thinking, s- move everybody up, keep that separation, and then do the two-point-five percent, and then do the other gimmies, so basically start at one and then go through this list, is what you're thinking?
Yeah, as far as on the legit- longevity side, I don't think there's that, there was that many dispatchers that were even, even eligible on the longevity pay. I think only one or two.
Mr. D, does that kind of answer your question? Move everybody up the appropriate amounts first? Yep.
Did you have a comment, Councilman Lester?
I, it just seems to me that the dispatchers are a special case, and that they be handled totally separate from the other, but just because, I mean, they're moving up by at least three thousand, what, seven hundred? I, I agree with keeping the separation from whatever it is currently, keeping that added to, but I don't know about then adding all the other, it just seems. It, it would be good to know, uh, what's, what, did you find out what the Cole County dispatchers are, what they're?
Do you remember what Cole County dispatchers are, are paid? I don't remember, I didn't see it, I don't.
We dispatch for Cole County? You mean as far as like the Sheriff's Department and the-
The emergency medical for them.
No, I do not have those numbers.
We'll get that Councilman Hensley, and then Councilman Deacon?
Yeah, thank you, just in response to Councilman Lester, that was, this was a real close question for me also, I, I, I view that particular group, uh, as one with a, sort of a, a salary profile that we recognize that we needed to fix in a very focused way, which, which we're proposing to do through item number five here. Then once we've, once we've fixed them, fixed the salaries in that way, then go on to treat them like everyone else, uh, through paragraphs one through four, that's sort of my thinking.
Councilman Deacon?
Yeah, my thought was, this is a special group of people, you can't lump them in with anyone else. Firefighters are special, police is special, the dispatchers are special, they have to have, the training's incredible, the amount of, um, patience and expertise and just overall, just, just gut instinct that they have to deal with, and then to live with what, did I make the right call? Yeah, they should be paid well, I don't think, um, I wouldn't want to handle the stress, and I raised a lot of kids, but that, that's way above and beyond what I, what I would want to do.
Well, thank you, Ray's a good point, and I think that is the intention, to try to, to take that into account before any of the other calculations come into play. Mr. D, I just want to go back to your second question, you, you asked in regard to people that hit the cap. I've had it explained to me, I'm not sure I understand, could you kind of walk us, when you hit the cap, is it, you hit the cap and there's no other benefit from the increase, or how does that transact it?
So historically, so when we do, for example, across-the-board increases in the budget each year, um, if the, if the, um, say we did like this last year, November one, we did a three percent across-the-board increase, if an employee was topped out, um, that three percent would put them at the top or above, then they would get, could get a dollar figure up to a maximum of a thousand dollars in a one-time payment. But that was it, so their, their maximum salary would not go over the maximum of the pay, or, sorry, their salary would not go over the maximum of the pay range.
From my understanding, it doesn't impact their benefits, so they're losing some on their benefits, is that correct? If they go over the cap?
Uh, they're not losing benefits, do you mean benefits like health insurance and stuff like?
No, they're, anything that would go toward their pension, or any other?
Yeah, I mean, because their base salary would stay at the cap.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they lose that little bit on the pension, or the above.
Yes.
Which over thirty years could transact to a lot, a lot of money.
Yeah, although, I mean, do keep in mind that most of the people who would be topped out would be here a long term.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure I understood, as it was explained to me.
Want us to do with that. And we can go by what the personnel policy manual says, is up to a thousand dollars.
Purely cash, though, right?
Yeah, it's, it's put into their paycheck.
Lumps, a lump sum.
Lump sum, one-time payment.
Councilman Spencer, you look like you have words of wisdom.
Well, you know, it, there's not that many employees that are topped out, so I think it, you know, that's kind of a rare, rarity. Um, I think, I think there's a lot of employees that would love to have the luxury of being topped out, um, before they retire, but, um, and from my, from my understanding, that has been kind of selective, um, because we've had, we have had some personnel in the fire department that was topped out, but they didn't get the one-time payment. So, I don't know if that's not a, if that's a consistency issue, or what, but.
No, I, I mean, that's something that we calculate every year, so we look every year to see who's topped out, and if they're topped out, then they would get a lump sum payment.
Or just the one, or the one time.
They would get it every year if there's across-the-board increases, yes.
All right, we have an amendment to the amendment on the table, any other discussion on striking item eight, paragraph eight? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, back to the amended bill ordinance. All yours.
Thank you, um, so I think where we stand now is, uh, an amended exhibit, uh, B, and a motion and a second to, um, adopt the amendment and alter, uh, the bill that's currently before us, is that right? Okay, I just, I renew my motion and I'll close.
Second.
All right, you have the amended bill before you, any other questions, comments, everybody clear what you're voting on? All right, all in favor?
Roll call would be appropriate to the bill.
Councilman Spencer?
And just for clarification, though, then we offer our amendments to, to-
Correct.
Right, thank you, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Yeah, then we will have, at this moment, a clean bill that we can work on. All right, we are gonna do a roll call.
Deacon?
Yes.
Fitzwater?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Kemna?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman? Aye.
All right. Now I have Councilman Hensley's amended bill, would you like to speak to that?
Uh, no, I don't think I have anything else to add, I, I think we'll hear from, uh, other council members who, uh, who have, uh, their own uh, amendments to propose, thank you. All, I guess I'll hold until later, until maybe we're in a position to take final action, if that's appropriate tonight.
Councilman Lester?
So I, I would offer to amend the bill to, uh, add to it an increase of the minimum pay grade for each level by two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and guess, from what was said, uh, also increasing the, the top scale by that amount too, is that?
Over and above what's already in the bill, or substituted?
Well, what's currently in the pay scales, there's minimums, and so I'm saying to, to increase the minimum at each of the pay scales by two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And then, I guess, raise the upper, upper end that as much too.
From, so from a purely mechanical perspective, um, is that an amendment to exhibit B, uh, item one? And so instead of saying one thousand, two hundred and fifty per employee, the number is to, no, okay.
No, this is a separate, this is a separate addition to what's, what's in, totally separate.
Thank you.
Because it's, because B currently is just, uh, current employees, uh, this would be related to, yeah, basically.
Sorry for the confusion, thank you.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you, so just to make sure I'm clear, uh, if we approve this, it would not allow existing employees who are going to receive the benefits of the other items to essentially double-dip with, with the increases, this would be to increase the minimum and maximum, uh, so that, I, I guess for, for future employees for recruiting purposes, is that the idea?
That's correct, to, to put us in a better position for, uh, recruiting new employees to these positions that we have so many vacancies for.
Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, I would, I would be opposed to that until we get the salary study back. Um, I think we can hold off on, on this part, not, not hold up everything with what we've got working with tonight, and, uh, just hold off on moving the brackets until, until that salary study comes back, and during the budget process.
Other comments?
I have to concur with Councilman Spencer, I think, um, we have a start here, we lay it out, and then we are having a salary study, and then, um, we can look at it with, with a clearer vision, I think. Because we're getting into a lot of money, right now, um, approximately eighty percent of our budget is salaries, and we've got other services we have to have, we can't just all of a sudden, hundred, ninety percent is salaries, we're gonna, I want to pay the people well, but we have to look at other things too, so, uh, I think with, on the board is, is, um, is a start, and then we'll have a salary study, and then we can see, um, where, uh, where we have to pick it up. I don't really see a great, I see people in the, um, where they're doing the hard work, but I don't see, uh, yeah, a lot of these, these are the ones, some of those are nice to have, but, uh, police and fire, we don't need two more planners, we've got seven planners now. I mean, you can go through the list, that's staffing levels that we've had. I'm, I'm just gonna make an editorial comment, we haven't grown in ten years, we're a sweet little town, it's a nice community, it's good working conditions, we have excellent fire and police protection, we have a good community mores. This isn't a bad place to work, there's a lot of cities you guys that have a hard story working in, and I would love to be able to, to match salaries with other cities, but, um, working conditions in, uh, just a really nice city to work for, when you know you're not getting, getting stabbed in the back by somebody stealing like Mr. or Councilman down there who's sleeping, remember so well, years ago, when they were stealing money from the city. The, uh, it's not, it's, it's a, it's a good deal, this is a good start, if the salary study said we need to increase, yes, then we can increase.
So, so, so we have six, we have, uh, vacancies now for six communications officers. This, what's been proposed is for current employees. So my understanding, we're still, for these vacancies we have, is still at the minimum, is that, is that correct? Way we're set up?
Councilman Hensley?
Uh, my intention anyway with paragraph five there was to set the minimum pay for, uh, all current and future, uh, communications operators at forty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Councilman Spencer?
That, that's, that's what I had thought as well, so, um. there's, and there's still that incentive in play too. So I, I think, I think we, if we go with down this route, I think hopefully, you know, not being able to tell them to criss the ball of what the, of the job market, but I think it's really going to open up opportunities for, for recruitment enhancements for our dispatchers. And maybe some that were on the fence of leaving might stay, hopefully.
Well, we've been flexible on the discussion. I've not heard a second, so I think that amendment dies for lack of a second. Other discussion, Councilman Spencer?
I would just like to offer an amendment for the longevity pay plan. To go to increase the brackets from fifteen, twenty, twenty-five to thirty. And strike forty and strike thirty-five. So it'd be capped at thirty years. And the cost on that, um, program would be from three fourteen to fifty down to two ninety-five, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Did you get that?
I got the years. I didn't get the amount.
Can you repeat that one more time?
So fifteen years of service would be twelve fifty. Twenty years of service would be seventeen fifty. Twenty-five years of service would be two thousand dollars. Thirty years of service would be twenty-five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Those are totals, not not individual sums. It's not, that's, that's, that's an in total. Okay, thank you.
All right, we have proposed amendment. I think I heard a second from Councilmember Ward. All right, we've got an amendment on the table for discussion. Councilmember Wiseman?
I like it. Let's vote on it.
We can do that. We will do a roll call votes. Here we go.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
All right.
Where do we stand on the ARPA twenty-five hundred dollars? Did we do anything with that yet?
We have not done anything with that yet. We have an amended bill on the table.
Do we need to move to approve that or has it, or?
Prove which?
The amended bill? I mean, does it stands right now or do we just, are you just looking for discussion before a final vote potentially or another amendment?
Councilman Hensley?
Yeah, I think it would be appropriate for us to discuss now. And I, I think, I think we could vote to approve it as part of the total package. I suppose we could also, pull it out for a separate vote if that was advised. Um, but, I mean, I included it here as part of this package, thinking that we could potentially vote off, vote on all of it all at once, but.
So the way we currently stand, um, item six here is in exhibit B and is in the bill currently. So there would need to be movement to excluded if it did not want to be included as part of the bill.
So the answer to your question is it's on the table with the rest of the package.
Yep.
So we are on discussion on the amended bill. All questions? But before you do that, my only concern is that we've got a lot of things laying on the table with no numbers associated with them. I just feel very uncomfortable not having the final number. And I, I get it if council is ready to move on one vote out of ten. Is it magic that we have to do that tonight and not get the final numbers for next week? Are people comfortable enough that we're within ranges? Because looking at spending about two million dollars. Councilman Hensley?
Yeah, I will say that, um, the numbers that I included here were secondhand at best. They were secondhand to me. I'm not sure how many layers of sifting they went through before they got to me. So, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't put any sort of warranty on, um, on accuracy here. Uh, I was going, you know, basically on the, the big round numbers that had been part of the discussion to this point. Uh, but, you know, if the consensus of staff is that our numbers, uh, you know, are not in the ballpark, um, and that, uh, some additional scrubbing would be useful, uh, I'm certainly in no position to, to argue against that. I think, I think though, that what we, you know, if we weren't to finally approve it tonight, I think what we could do is uh, voice that this is more or less the direction we'd like to go pending, pending final numbers. But I, I, you know, I, I think it would probably be good at this point for us to hear from several members of staff regarding different elements of these numbers, uh, before we even make that decision.
Councilman Spicer, did you have a comment? Councilman Hensley opened it up to staff. Any comments? Kind of guidance, recommendations, direction? I, I just feel uncomfortable voting on something. I, I don't know what the final price tag is. Hopefully, our city staff has seen the commitment from council that we've got a package we're pretty close with. And I think you know what the outside numbers are. You know, I would just like to see what the bottom line is as we try to fit it into the twenty twenty-three budget, because we'll be picking up not only five months of this commitment, other than the ARPA, but twelve months of this commitment. And I realize we won't have that number, but if we can at least see what the impact is on twenty-two gives us a little guidance on twenty-three. Councilman Spencer and then Councilwoman Ward?
Yeah, I, I mean, again, these were numbers based on last year's data. There might, there might be fewer employees in this longevity pay plan. So, I mean, I, I feel fairly comfortable with that number. Um, it's just, uh, the, the number one on, on exhibit B here. Where that number kind of falls in, in a lockstep there. So, um, but the rest of these are kind of fixed cost. You know, across the board, flat amounts. So I, I would, I would, I'm fine with waiting on our finance department, HR department, to be able to kind of button this up and put final numbers to it. To vote for Tuesday night. Again, I think it does, I think we've come a long way tonight. And I, I think we're all in agreement in principle of, of where we want to go. So just to, just to kind of make sure there's something that doesn't, you know, surprise us, uh, that, that I wasn't thinking of. And, um, you know, that's a possibility. So I just want to make sure we get a, a good number for everybody so they're comfortable with it as well. So I, I, I have no problem with bringing this up for Tuesday night as Councilman Spicer suggests. Thank you.
Councilman Ward?
And if we were to vote, uh, in favor of moving forward pending, you know, the, the final numbers, regarding ARPA, since that's, won't be a part of those numbers, can can our vote move that forward? Um, I mean, I know it's a part of this, and we wouldn't be officially voting on it until Tuesday. However, the ARPA money isn't a part of, you know, our general fund. So you know what I'm saying? Can, can that piece move forward, start getting that? I mean, I don't know what that entails as far as sending out payments, but, you know, the sooner.
It seems to me like we'd have to dismantle what we've done, is that?
Yeah, it, it's, it's, so, so nothing can be actually implemented until it's budgeted. And so I would say that it probably wouldn't, there would be no practical benefit to approving it tonight because we'd have to follow up with the budget, um, the budgeting item in order to actually issue any payments. And so I would say there, there would be no practical benefit to doing that tonight. There may be other benefit to do that. There's no, there's no practical benefit because we can't, can't write checks until it's actually been budgeted.
But isn't it already budgeted? I mean, the ARP, I mean, the ARPA money?
It, it's, so, um,
You know what?
Approved in a budgeting bill, which has to be by ordinance.
And we also need to figure out the prospective part of that. I don't know what that looks like. Maybe you do, but I don't know what that looks like.
Mr. Protem?
I, I was just, did you have another comment?
I, I did, I did. So this is just a suggestion. Um, if, if we wanted to close that business with some affirmative direction, a motion directing the city administrator to prepare a substitute bill in line with the amended bill, I think would be an appropriate, uh, direction. And as part of that, we could have the, 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 um, more accurate numbers reflected in that bill.
So moved.
A motion is second to do that, which I think accomplishes what, what we're trying to do. Councilman Schreiber, you've been quiet. Are you comfortable with that moving forward? Perfect. Any other comments? Again, three, three of our colleagues did an amazing job of trying to explain to us what, and our staff, thank you very much. I think we've got a great package on the table and we will take a vote, but I think we can all kind of anticipate where it's going, but we will do a roll call vote.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye. And just remind you, that is to move the bill forward. We've asked our city administrator to kind of put it in a final package and we will see it on July the fifth, next Tuesday. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. So just, um, so we're on the same page. I, we have a, a lot to deal with next Tuesday, right? We have, uh, this will be up and then, uh, I expect that we'll have the, uh, pending ARPA proposal also, um, also on the, on the agenda in addition to other regular business. So, uh, just to make sure I'm in my best position to participate that night, I'll, I'll be a thousand miles away and appearing on that screen up there. So if you need anything, uh, in hard copy from me, you've got until Thursday.
Well, thanks to everyone again. Yeah, I know we had a long discussion on this at the last meeting. I think, at least for me, this was very productive to flesh it out of what we're exactly talking to. I mean, I think, again, there was a lot of commitment that we want to move forward with something significant for our staff. So I appreciate all the work. Any other business to come before? So if not, you're back so you can make the motion.
I move to adjourn. Fitzwater?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Thank you for letting me join from Chicago unexpectedly. I appreciate that. And our employees are definitely our biggest and best asset at the City of Jefferson. So I think having council take the time to look at all of these proposals and try to come up with the very best. And I, I appreciate seeing the collaboration and looking at all those plans and coming together with something that would be best. So I appreciate the continued collaboration between our council members and just thank you for, uh, running the meeting, Councilman Fitzwater. And, and also to our employees because we, I think we're putting so much extra time into it because they are such an important asset for us. So thank you.
You're welcome. Safe travels. Now, a motion is in order?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much.